Okay. All right, good evening, everyone. We're going to call this evening's Planning Commission meeting, October 28th, to order. Mary Beth, would you please take roll call?
Wow. Hi, Tyler.
Here.
Hi.
Here.
My name is.
Present.
Colin.
Okay, we've established a quorum. Next item of business is the approval of minutes from June 25th, 2025. Item 25, Peter Charlie dash 24. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from June 25th, 2025?
I'm going to approve the minutes from June 25th, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, with that, we'll move on to new business. The first item of new business is 25, Peter Charlie dash 25. It's to open a public hearing for today on the Galena Comprehensive Plan. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So, anyone that is going to speak tonight, either in favor of or opposition of, I need to make sure you have signed in. Okay, and if you could stand and raise your right hand. Okay. I do swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Do you agree? Very good, thank you. All right, with that, I'd like to open the floor to anyone that would like to speak in favor of. First, Matt, go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Matt Olmberg. I represent the city of Galena, 101 Green Street. And I'm here this evening to present to you some items of discussion, particularly the blackjack corridor and also non-conforming uses relative to our future land use map. We've, I've met with some of the landowners from the blackjack corridor. They sent a pretty detailed letter to us back in June, around the time that we had our last Planning Commission meeting, and with their concerns, and so we weren't able to really get together until September and have some information that should come before you, you know, before we go ahead and do our final adoption of the comp plan. And I want to make sure we have a good process and give folks an opportunity to speak about the concerns.
Good.
And so, tonight, we'll have that discussion. I'll be able to hopefully speak to any concerns that they have as well. I'd like to follow the, you know, follow the public hearing procedures from the zoning board. So we'll have anybody in favor, anybody opposed.
Cross.
A chance for the board to use that evidence and have any questions for the applicant, which would be the city. And then we can close the public hearing.
Very good, thank you, Matt. Okay. Anyone else to speak in favor of? Okay. Please state your name and your address.
Brad Petersburg, 5060 South Blanding Road.
Thank you.
And I just simply want to speak in favor and support of the comprehensive plan as proposed. No amount of thought. In planning when I knew it, I, as you probably know, I've been involved in hoping to develop a potential project on the east side of town, starting with the potential realignment of blackjack road under the east side of town. And the city and the county, both back in early June, entered a memorandum of understanding supporting the realignment of blackjack road. And so I know there's a lot of strong support in the community. I know there is some, some of the plans that were tweaked in the comprehensive plans were looking forward or looking ahead to possible land uses in that area. And I simply want to speak in favor of that, supporting some flexibility for future opportunities there. But first, that has to be that road and health and safety and addressing the problems we already have right now at the intersection of Fourth Street. So, thank you for all your effort on the plan, and I'm strongly in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other individuals that would like to speak in favor of the comprehensive plan? Okay, seeing none, I'll open the floor to any of those that would like to speak in opposition of the comprehensive plan. Please state your name and your address.
Wendy Clark, 1107 Forest Street. Thanks for this opportunity, and I'll say that I almost got up during the "in favor", because I actually think that it's a really good plan. It's, it's, I'm not opposed to the plan itself at all, but I and my neighbors have a request for a few very specific adjustments to the plan, and so it just felt like that puts me better, you know, in this time spot. But I do want to say that it is, I think, a really, really good effort, and there are some things in there that I think are just stubborn. And so, in general, we really support it. We just want to ask you to think about a few very specific things to adjust specific to the land use map. I also want to really thank you for the opportunity to meet again and make sure that, as Matt said, we kind of have all the process steps that we can do. Another thing I want to mention is that the packet, or the information that I provided that went into the packet, I wasn't really expecting to have that opportunity, and so on Friday, when they asked, "Oh, do you want us to go in?", and I said, "Okay", but I realized that what I gave you isn't necessarily quite as concise or as clear as I might have liked. So just kind of bear that in mind. I did put together a bullet outline, and if you want to have that, I've got copies of it, but if that's not useful, that's fine.
That'd be great, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
I think extra copies there, so.
Thank you.
What you have in the packet was kind of just my initial thinking through, and I haven't sorted it out yet. So, another, just quick thing I want to say is that a lot of, most of this information, the gist of it, comes out of the letter that nine of us landlords in the area signed and brought to you. But anything that I say tonight that isn't quite correct or whatever, that's on me. I take responsibility for the things that I specifically present today, but they do represent what we all talked about as residents and signed in that letter. So, I will refer to some of the things in the packet, but in general, I just want to start with a few kind of context and considerations that are more general, because the principles that I want to mention really apply to almost all of the specific requests that we want to make. And so, if I kind of walk you through that stuff, then when I get to the specifics, then we can move through those fairly quickly, because most of them have kind of the same set of issues. So, one of the things that I want to talk about, I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but I do have a land use planning background. Actually, I worked as a land use planner in the federal government, which is a little bit different, you know? So I'm not going to say, "Oh, I know how this works", but I'm familiar, at least kind of in general, with some of the principles of planning, and that includes discussion about need or need for change, which is really kind of what motivates some of this updating of the comprehensive plan is, what is it that we need to change, particularly in the land use plan, that we have now, but that isn't necessarily the way we want things to be in the future? And one of those needs that I'll focus on in particular, because it's relevant to some of these parcels, is the need for housing in Galena and affordable housing. And we recognize that that's a complex issue, and it's kind of comes from, there's a couple parts to it. One of those is simply physical supply, and then another part of it is affordability. And those are things that I think are addressed in different ways in the comprehensive plan, which is, which is great. You know, that's obviously what you would expect to see. But the thing that you guys had to kind of wrestle with, and the contractor did, is how we meet that need and where we meet that need, and can we do it in a way that doesn't create additional problems that might be just as severe as, as our need for housing? And so, what we're asking you folks to do is kind of to maybe take a half step back and provide a really good objective evaluation about how and where we best meet that need. That was one of the reasons put forth for some of the land use designations around the east side that we're concerned about. And one of my neighbors in particular, Don Shine, was very concerned about whether there was even enough of a need to say, "Let's put this stuff here." So, I talked to Don, and he was fine with me, you know, bringing that specifically to your attention. And then also, I had put on page five in the packet some information about impacts to surrounding existing uses. Now, I know a couple of you either are or have been on the zoning board and are aware, of course, that usually that question about impacts to existing uses is asked during zoning. And this isn't zoning, this is just future, you know, what do we think would be an appropriate use in this area? But identifying an appropriate use actually invites zoning. Essentially, you know, let's say, for example, you have a commercial area, and on the land use map, you identify that a good future use for it would actually be industrial now. Essentially, what you're saying is if someone comes to you with a proposal that would require rezoning to industrial, that would be an appropriate thing to consider. That's kind of how this stuff all fits together. And so, we feel that it's very important from a planning perspective to think about how that change in use designation might impact the surrounding existing uses. And in our case, as neighbors, we're very concerned about it, because the value of our property, both the personal value, our living value, as well as the monetary value, should we decide or need to sell in the future, is very tied to the setting. Right now, we're in a setting that's semi-bural, leading into agriculture. Some of the folks who signed up to the letter are currently outside the city limits, but everyone is concerned about essentially being sort of sandwiched in between a commercial and more high-intensity uses, and how that would sort of change our property and its, both its personal and monetary values. So that's one thing that we feel we would ask you maybe to consider a little bit more. And then also, we are concerned about creating more problems than are solved. And again, I've had some conversations where we talked about this being future land use, right? This isn't tomorrow, you know, just because you designate something for a certain use doesn't mean tomorrow a subdivision's going to pop up there. But there are proposals out there already. I mean, they're not formal proposals, but we know, you know, as Mr. Petersburg indicated, there's some ideas about maybe doing some development there. So we know that those ideas already are there, and essentially, the future of the land use starts once the plan is signed. That could be very immediate. And what we would ask you to consider is that there are a lot of reasons why we're not really set up to support the future uses that are indicated on the map. One of the key issues is creating areas of additional housing that could be potentially fairly intense, dense housing through the mixed residential and even the single-family residential identifications, depending on how those traffic is zoning, and I'm not exactly clear on how those do, but both of those would allow for a certain density of residential development. And that would mean there'd be a whole lot of people on the east side who have to get to shopping, schools, jobs, church, clinic, debut, everything, that's all on the west side of the river. So it creates a huge traffic flow from those dense, or even not so dense, but additional housing areas that would need to get over to the west side to access pretty much everything that they need. There's been some talk about shuttles and so on, but, you know, we need to kind of look at what's real versus what, what might happen, you know? And shuttles are kind of a nifty thing, maybe we'll all buy into that in the future, but we all know right now, they kind of have, you know, I, I mean, I live within walking distance of downtown, and I drive over here if I can a lot of the time, right? So, you know, we need to really think about what kind of impact that would have, putting a bunch of people living on the east side right there, who then have to hop onto the highway and come over kind of through the bottleneck over to the west side. And we would argue that we're just not set up for that at this time, and so we don't want to indicate that as an appropriate land use when, when it can't really be supported by how we're currently set up. Also, that could lead, and now I'm kind of speculating a little, but again, in planning, you kind of, one of the things I used to do, as I did a lot of analysis, was looking at what are the future consequences of decisions that we make in land use planning? And so, thinking ahead, one of the things that's likely to happen, and I look at some planning materials as well from the Planning Association and some of the firms that do training, and they really caution against creating problems that then require more development to solve them. And that's certainly a potential here, where, you know, people on, in some of those potential developments around the east side, like already, sometimes I'm like, "I don't want to drive all the way over to Pig or Walmart to get groceries", you know, because I live on Tostitos from the gas station up above. You get enough people with that kind of pressure, and next thing you know, you're thinking, "Well, you know, we could stick a Dollar General over here", or "Maybe we could, you know, build another little hardware store or whatever", and it starts to invite sprawl. And I'm not saying that's going to happen, but I think we need to kind of armor ourselves against that a little bit. The Comprehensive Plan talks specifically about sprawl, I can't remember exactly where, but the idea is we don't want to sprawl. We don't want to have what we decide to do start to force us to have to do things that we weren't planning on and we weren't thinking about, and that might be difficult to do or cost taxpayers a lot of money. And so, again, we would argue that some of these parcels that are, the way that they're identified for future use could lead to problems that are sort of unintended consequences. To get a little more specific then, the other thing, one of the things that's really important, I think, to consider, and this gets away from, you know, sort of the "what I want" or "you want" or "this person wants" or "that person wants", but just some sort of basic facts about what Galena can or can't handle right now. And that sort of falls in the category of not putting the cart before the horse. So, traffic is the huge one. And so, on page six of the packet handout that you have, I had included, and you don't necessarily need to be looking at it, but I'd included a table from the bypass study. And that was done quite a number of years ago, but what was really striking to me about it was that it showed that in 1993, which is kind of a long time ago, but I think was when they first started gathering data for that study, they identified the section of Highway 20 from 84 all the way through to the eastern city limit as being at Level of Service E, which is the second worst, which is significant delays and average travel speeds of one-third of the free flow speed. So even in 93, we were already having a problem, which, that's kind of why the bypass was proposed, right? And I'm not advocating for or against the bypass, that's, I don't think that's going to happen in my lifetime, so it doesn't matter what I do or don't think about it. But, but that was what precipitated. It wasn't somebody saying, "Let's spend a billion dollars trying to figure something out that everybody's going to hate or tomatoes at", it was, "There's a problem here, and it's traffic flow through Galena, and how are we going to solve that?" So we're already over capacity, and in that study, they were indicating, they were projecting that by 2020, we would be at LOSF, Level of Service F, which is the lowest rating that they give it. And that is characterized by arterial flow at extremely slow speeds, intersection congestion likely at critical signal locations, so that means like wherever there's a stoplight, people have to wait more than one stoplight cycle to get through it, and extensive lineups behind it and so on. And it represents a condition that is intolerable to most motorists. So, that's something we already have, of course, on our busiest weekends, but sometimes just during regular busy weekends. And so, that's, that's just data, you know, that's just a thing that exists, and it's a problem. And it also, we have to remember impacts through traffic. The IDOT data shows roughly an average of 1,000 commercial trucks a day coming through Galena, which I was like, "Really"? Now granted, that's not every day, that's an average, right? But that means some days we have more than that many coming through, some days we have less. So what we do, and the things that we, the decisions that the city of Galena makes that affect that highway, affect an awful lot of people, you know, not just grandma and grandpa going to Sioux City for Thanksgiving, but like interstate commerce is affected by decisions we make that affect traffic on that road. Mr. Petersburg mentioned the cutoff road, and I have just a really awful map on page seven of the of the packet stuff, and I apologize for that, that was more of a thought process, and I apologize to those of you in the audience who aren't seeing it, although you're lucky, because it's a map. But what that was trying to show, it was kind of a thought experiment I was doing to look at, you know, what the traffic numbers are now on Highway 20 at various points, and then on blackjack coming to and from Highway 20. And that's the numbers in the boxes that are shown on the back left. And those are data from 2021, that was the most recent data that I could pull from the IDOT interactive website. And the thing that really struck me about it is that, and I actually talked to the county about this when I'm not with them, about the cut across road, the idea of the blackjack cutoff, which I've been supportive of, you know, I have to come out through that intersection all the time. And, and it's, you know, sometimes I sit there and I time how long it takes, or I count trucks, or you know, whatever. But that is still, that's not going to change the traffic congestion problem on Highway 20. All that traffic from blackjack, it'll move it to hopefully a much more safe location, which I think would be an excellent idea. And if it's signal controlled with a turning lane, that may help a little bit with some congestion. But until that project moves forward, and we don't know if it's going to, that's a key thing. We don't really know what's going to happen, we don't know what we're going to find out as that proceeds through study, we, we don't know that it's really going to make much difference, and I doubt it can, because there, again, it's just sort of math. It's 1,500 vehicles a day going back and forth on a highway that's already over capacity. And so, what we're concerned about, and I think we all need to be in again, this isn't pro-growth, anti-road, pro-this, pro-that, it's just a fact that we just, we aren't ready at this point. We don't have a solution to that very concerning traffic problem. And so, it, it doesn't seem responsible at all to indicate land uses out there, and you can see on the screen, you know, some of the, about, you know, land uses that would add a lot more traffic to Highway 20, that we haven't figured out how to handle anyway. So then I'm going to move to another issue, which is runoff management. And, you know, as much as, I know I'm sort of defined by a certain particular issue, and I know I can get perceived a certain way, but I'll tell you, the one thing that really struck me when I looked at the land use map and saw those designations up there was not, "Oh, too many people" or "Too many lights" or any of that stuff, that, you know, whatever. What struck me about it was, "Oh my gosh, I'm going to get flooded out." That scares me really, honestly, a lot. When it rains hard, I'm up at night looking out, because I get so much runoff. Most of what I get isn't even from the creek coming down, but I watch my whole yard fill up from Rives and Ford and Blackjack and so on, and then Davis Creek comes up. And my neighbors, a bunch of us responded to the Watershed Project survey, and I was really surprised to learn just how many people have gone to great personal expense to try to address runoff issues in their yards, on their property, with their driveways, et cetera. It was really interesting to see, even, you know, like Don Shine, I mentioned him before, they put in some detention ponds on their property, he's not going to get washed out, but he was trying to control erosion and just prevent things from being worse down below. And so, the reason, again, it's kind of like, "Why was there a bypass study done?", "Well, because we have this congestion issue and we haven't solved it yet." Well, the reason that the Watershed Project has really kind of taken hold as an idea is because we've got this runoff problem. The county jumped onto it because blackjack road is constantly kind of in threat of being eroded away as runoff comes down, particularly off of Highway 20 to the north, by Darlene's House and so on. They're always having to add rip-rope and fix culverts and so on. And so, that's really an issue. But the thing is about the Watershed Project, it's a, it's a good move in the right direction, but right now, we don't know if it's going to happen. And something that I think a lot of people don't understand about the Watershed Project is that if it gets funded, this first phase is only to get us to a plan. So it'll take four or five years before we even just get a plan that tells us what some of the problems are and how to solve them. And then, then we have to find the money and the means to actually do the things the plan might suggest. And right now, we don't even know if we're going to get a plan. And so, again, it would be putting the cart before the horse to add more potential runoff without having that guidance, or without even knowing if we're going to get that guidance. And so that's a real concern as well. And then also, and I would defer to Matt about this, but there's some concern, I think, about whether the city standards for residential runoff management are adequately protected. They're kind of different, I guess, from those for commercial. That's a detail I don't understand, so I would encourage you to ask him about it, and I might be misunderstanding it. But in general, you know, rainstorms are becoming more fierce and more frequent, except when we have these weird drought spells and so on. But we need to make really sure that we're able to handle this before we start adding potential runoff. And we're just not there yet. Another issue is EMS capacity, and I definitely don't want to put words in, you know, bad mouth of anyone else's. But just to kind of touch on that issue, I know that some of the discussion that happened about the cutoff road and potential projects and so on, there was talk of facilities on the east side to try and address that issue. And I don't have any idea how the EMS folks feel about that, that's something that, you know, that them or others would be more appropriate to answer. But the fact is, it is, we don't have a facility over there, and talking about having one is, you know, we don't have funding for it, and it would, I assume, cost a lot to build a facility and fill it with all that equipment. And then my understanding is that, you know, when we have a declining population, do we have adequate people to staff an additional facility on the east side? Like, maybe we do, I don't know, but there's a lot of questions we haven't answered yet, and we need to answer before we start stretching EMS services even further on the east side. And I did note that in the June meeting notes, and I wasn't able to be here for that meeting, that, I think it was then actually said that costs have increased 13% year to year. So the demand seems to be increasing, and yet, it doesn't appear that right now we're keeping up with that, or maybe we are, but again, until we really know that we can address the need for more costs on the east side, we need to be careful about adding more need. And then finally, there's a water flow, water supply issue. And again, this is one that I don't have all the information about or the details, but my understanding is that the east side, or some of it, is at or near the limit of water flow and water supply. And I also understand that there is some discussion about doing some things that would improve that, and I think that's great, that's a good idea, but we're not there yet. You know, we haven't done it, we don't have funds for it yet, the plans aren't in place yet, and so on. So again, it seems to me that saying it would be appropriate to have certain uses that would require a whole lot more flow before we actually have that flow and that supply is not a good idea. And again, I know that this is future land use, but once we sign, or once, not we, but once, you know, you guys recommend and the city approves the documents, then, you know, in theory, the next day, someone can come in and say, you know, "Here, I have this proposal, and it's for this area, and it fits with what you have in the land use map, so let's go." Now, yes, the city has the ability to put some constraints on it and so on. I know it's a lot more complicated than I'm sort of painting it right now, but it seems to me to be a lot more sensible to, and to my neighbors as well, to wait. And one of the things my understanding is that the city wants to do, and maybe you guys have talked about this, is to try and do some updates more frequently to the plan, which I think is excellent. And those don't have to be big and tons of processes like this. I mean, it's just an exercise where you sit down and you look at what are the changing needs and what are the changing things going on out there? Maybe we've got, you know, a new water reservoir, a new storage facility, and so that, you know, we can check that box and say, "Now that problem's solved, we can move forward." It sort of reminds me of when sewage treatment plant, the new treatment plant was built. I say "new" just because I remember the one that was down by the foundry when I was a kid. But, but anyway, my understanding was that that was built with extra capacity, so that, you know, while Galena's going to grow, we're going to get more people, so let's build it in, build in some more capacity. And we're not there yet with water supply, or with traffic, or with the runoff issue and so on right now. So it's, it seems smarter to wait, and then we can sort of catch up, if, in the future, if in a few years, we say, "You know what? We have a need to put some housing somewhere, and we think this area would be a good place to put it, and the impacts that would happen there are not so much, then we're going to go ahead with it." But right now, I would say that, you know, the specifics I'm going to go into in a second, are just getting the cart ahead of the horse. And it doesn't mean we can't go there in the future, it just means that now is probably not the time to sort of set the stage, because what we would be doing is setting ourselves up for something that we can't really support, at least not at this time. So we're requesting that the commission So we're requesting that the commission wait to make those changes until solutions are actually known and actually in progress. So now I'm going to go through, and I'm sorry to take so much time, but I just don't have to do this. I'm going to go through the request by parcel, but I'm going to try to be as brief as I can because most of them are that I've already talked about. So the first one is the greenhouse parcel. And on the map, it's, thanks, Matt, for zooming in a little, but it's mostly to kind of know, but it's this isolated little commercial orange blob that's kind of smack in the middle right now. But we all know where these are from houses. And on that map, it shows it as commercial. But that's, the greenhouse is a non-conforming use. So it's in an area that's unresidential. And just for the benefit of other folks here, again, I know you guys are some people and you know this, but for, for the benefit of, of people who are listening, the purpose of non-conforming use gets confused. So it doesn't mean it doesn't conform with city code, it means it doesn't conform with the surrounding uses. But non-conforming use, as you know, is a, an appropriate zoning designation that can be used permanently and in perpetuity. And the purpose is to protect the character of the surrounding area, but allow an existing use to continue. It's essentially grandfathering in. So with the greenhouse, which existed, I don't know, since time began as far as I can remember, it was when zoning happened, that had already been there. And the zoning for the area was clearly going to be residential because it's all just houses in there. But the greenhouse was given a non-conforming use designation so that it could continue to be a greenhouse forever. You know, they didn't say, all right, we're zoning this residential, you got to shut your doors and go. You know, that's the point of non-conforming use, is say it can still be a greenhouse forever and ever, but if you stop being a greenhouse, then it's done and it has to go back to single-family residential. And so I would argue that that and probably a number of other non-conforming uses needs to be indicated differently on the map. Because the other thing that happens, and this is something I've seen in my own experience, is you get decision-makers and planners and so on who look at a land use map and say, well, it says commercial, so it should be commercial. And, you know, a few years down the road, you've got people who weren't part of this process, who don't really know the history of why that's orange on the map. And someone comes in, you know, let's say that Amy gets beamed up by aliens or something and somebody else, you know, winds up with the greenhouse and they, they're not a greenhouse person. They come in and they say, I want to build a, you know, I want to have a sporting goods shop there or, you know, a coffee cafe or something like that. And you have people here, you know, in City Hall, particularly sort of citizen boards who just don't have the background, who would look at that map and say, well, it conforms with the, the land use map because it says commercial, when that's not really the intent. So giving non-conforming uses some kind of different designation with explanation, I think would just set us up for better success down the road with those things. And, and I know Matt's going to talk about that stuff because it gets complicated because there's a lot of different non-conforming uses that kind of have different histories and needs and futures and so on. But with respect to that one, we just would really like to see that not designated as appropriate for future commercial. Because really, future, what it should be, is residential. Because that's what it's supposed to become if it ever stops being a greenhouse. And honestly, the street network that wrote there can't support a busy commercial operation. You take your life in your hands when you back out of it, you know, as it is right now. The next parcel is the small one that's behind the N on North Blackjack Road. It's out by the county spot on Blackjack that it's owned by Mr. Fessler. And that's pretty much similar to the greenhouse issue. There isn't really a need to take that from, I think it's probably just agriculture because it's in the county right now and not in the city. There's no need for that to be identified as future commercial. I believe that that, kind of like the greenhouse, it's not exactly a non-conforming use because it's not in the city, but it's the same idea that it's being used right now. I think it was used by Earl Thompson to support his business, you know, to put stuff out there and so on. And I think now it might be used by Whites or, I'm not really sure, but, but at any rate, it's sort of like there's this existing use that's tied to a commercial operation. And so I think that's why it wound up being called a commercial. But I don't think that what we should be doing is saying, so it's appropriate to become, you know, Jim Smith's bait shop or something like that down the road. I think, again, that one, you know, should probably just be called rural or agriculture because that's sort of what it is. And that doesn't preclude them continuing to use it the way they do right now. It just means, again, you avoid somebody looking at that and saying, oh, somebody bought that and they want to put a bait shop and tavern on it and annex it and so on. I don't know that that's necessarily what we want to do. Somebody could come in with that proposal and we could decide we want to do it, but we don't want to invite it by calling it commercial. The next one is the Merkle and Petersburg parcels along US 20. And I'm actually going to kind of just skip past that one because that came up from a conversation about thinking outside of the box and what if Merkle went away, what would be the best use of that parcel and so on. But I will use that as a reminder to now talk about, just very briefly. In your packet, I put some information about the Highway 20 design manual. And really, all I want to say about that is that it's in city code and it's something we have to think about in planning. Again, we don't want to set ourselves up to not be able to conform to the Highway 20 manual. And in general, what that manual calls for is really protecting and preserving green space and view sheds, not just on the north side of the highway, but, but on the south side as well. It identifies certain specific view sheds in particular as high-value ones. But it also says, it's got some standards about maintaining a certain amount of open space view between buildings and so on and so forth. So when we're thinking about what's sort of the next thing or future use on some of those parcels, we really have to be mindful of what's in the Highway 20 design manual. But I'm going to move ahead to then the one that I'm calling the larger Petersburg parcel. Sorry, Brad, but it's just easier to identify those by giving kind of a name.
Which one is that?
And that's the one that's the bright yellow one. So you see the blue of the county health department?
Yeah, right there.
So it's the bright yellow one there.
Got it.
So that is identified as mixed resident, I can't roll with that, mixed residential, which could include apartments, condos, townhouses, et cetera. So that could be, in theory, that could invite zoning that would allow some pretty intensive residential development. And so I'm not going to drag you back through all the stuff I said before, but please remember the things I said about unresolved issues about traffic and water supply and possibly EMS service and runoff issues. So we would be inviting some pretty intense residential development when we don't have the ability to handle that right now. I mean, just traffic alone. Because again, even if you put a cutoff road through there, all those folks are coming off on a cutoff road and then heading for Walmart or, you know, the school or whatever. And, and we would be adding to a congestion issue that we don't have a resolution to right now. So we'll be putting the cart before the horse. Also, going back to kind of the need issue, there was talk about workforce housing as one of the possible things that could happen on there. And that, again, that's sort of speculative, we're not sure what proposals might commit and so on. But I would argue that the need for affordable housing could probably be better, better than that elsewhere, in places that would create fewer problems. I could sit down with you, I mean, I, I kind of wish we could do this like in a conversation because I could sit down and point out a lot of places on the map where you could stick an apartment or convert a building or house or something that are already served by city water and sewer and that already are on the street network and that are already on the west side where people are already closer to where they're going to work and take kids to school and all that stuff. So if we have a need for affordable housing or workforce housing or whatever it's being called, we don't want to create a different problem by trying to solve that one. And that's what would happen if we do that on this side. So that need really could be better met elsewhere. And then also, if that gets converted as we're requesting to rural agriculture, that doesn't preclude being able to build a few houses on it or something. That certainly wouldn't address the affordable housing need, but as I said, that's a need we can meet elsewhere. But what it would do is create a better transition to protected lands to the east and then ag land to the south. And that would actually sort of increase the value and attractiveness of those areas. So, and it would better conform with the Highway 20 design standards. When I was in, it's seventh or eighth grade here up at Central School, Jim Brady was my social studies teacher. And he took us through a zoning exercise. And one of the things that, that stuck with me for all these years, because I just, I guess I thought it was really interesting, was this concept of, you know, having like the intense uses and then working outward from those to less intense and less intense and so on until you get out to countryside. And so that's kind of the same principle there. If that was a less intense use, if that was, like, say rural, you could put houses on it, but they would be less intense and it would affect the Horseshoe Mountain Preserve experience a lot less and, and increase the value of, of those lands that it transitions to. The next piece is the spot below that, that's, looks kind of like a blank spot, but it's just between that bright yellow one and where it says North Blackjack Road. I think that's Bodens, maybe Coulter's, I'm not sure. But that whole area, we think should be changed, or we were requesting that you change that designation to rural or agriculture. And that's all the exact same reasons as the parcel that I just talked about. That one currently is identified as potentially, I think, single-family residential, but when you look at the description in the comprehensive plan for single-family residential, that still could allow for zoning that's fairly intense, that still could allow for things like duplexes and so on. And so we would argue that that piece, or we would request that that remain rural because that has all the same issues. Again, you build a cutoff road, but then it still dumps everybody on Highway 20 and there's runoff issues and so on and so forth. Then we have the Gateway Park commercial area, so we have Gateway Park and then there's the orange commercial block that's next to it. Now, this one's really thinking outside the box, but just bear with me here. And this is not one that I'm going to get really hung up about, but it came up in a conversation with someone about planning and so on, and so I wanted to bring it up. And, and that's sort of taking a step back and saying, what would really be the best use of this land in the future? Now, I know it's currently, a lot of it's zoned commercial. I can't remember if the outlines exactly match that right now, but if not, it's close. But is that really the best use of it? There's a couple, two, three businesses, like, there's a couple right along the highway and then there's the salon and then there's the wedding venue there. And if we identified that as actually better for single-family residential, it would still right now be zoned, what it is, as commercial, and those businesses could still be there. But what it would do is signal an intent to move for a less intense use in the future. And I just think that's really kind of a compelling idea. And the reason is that, you know, it would sort of provide that transition outward to less intense use. It would really enhance the value of Gateway Park. You could actually do some really neat things with some, some low-density residential development in that parcel that would fit really well with the other development across the way. Also, that has the same capacity issues in terms of traffic. You know, if we get a bunch of commercial development there, then all those cars have to get onto Highway 20. And the Powderhouse Hill Road intersection is pretty close to the curve on Horseshoe Mountain, the way it comes down, that's a low-visibility intersection. And so having a bunch of commercial traffic coming on and off that is also likely would compel, because the Highway 20 design manual requires traffic analysis for anything that's going on within that corridor. And I, I can't say this obviously for sure, but I would be very surprised if a traffic analysis of expanded development there from a commercial standpoint would require some pretty significant change to that intersection. Because if you come out from Gateway Park and you look left, it's kind of like, cars are coming, cars are coming, okay, go, you know? So that's a concern there. That parcel also has, I assume, the same issues with water supply. And again, if there are issues with spreading EMS to fit, that would be the same thing there. And then we get to the Parker parcels. And I'll be careful about how I talk about those. And I know I, you know, sort of, there's obviously a lot going on there, but to start with, I would say, just, those have the same issues. And I say those, I mean, it's, it's shown as one big chunk, it's, I'm used to thinking about it because there's a couple different parcels involved. But that piece has the same issues with traffic, with runoff, with EMS and with water flow. Like, just setting aside the approvals that already happened. Like, if we're just looking at this as, this is a land use map, what's appropriate there? And if I had no prior history with it and knew nothing about it, I'd be saying the same thing. I'd be saying, what are you going to do about traffic going to and from that place? What are you going to do about runoff in this really sensitive, already flood-prone watershed? Is it okay in terms of our emergency services? Do we have the water flow to support a commercial operation there? And I would argue also that it's a better fit if it got changed back to, and this is what we're requesting, changed to rural and agriculture, or actually, I'd say parks and open space, because why not do it, right? That would be a much better fit with the surrounding uses, including the fact that it runs up against the historic district and a few properties that are contributing properties to the historic district. It would protect the value of those properties just sort of objectively, not just me speaking as a, as a landowner and an owner of one of those properties. And then we get into some of the stickier issues, which are that, designating that on a land use map as either rural ag or open space. Oh, the other thing I was going to say in terms of fitting it better with surrounding uses is also, it's right up against the Belina River Trail, which is identified in the county greenways and trails plan as a, a greenway and it's a trail and it's something we all love. So you'd have this great connector essentially from the parcels that are indicated that are on Grady Hill as parks and open space, and then you have the Belina River Trail. And if you designated that, I mean, again, it doesn't mean that's what it's going to become, but it seems like, wow, wouldn't that be a cool future land use to have that as parks and open space? Or at least rural agriculture to kind of retain the look and feel of that whole stretch and not have a negative impact on the river trail. And then getting into actually the, the Parker issues, there are some sort of complicated things associated with that. So changing that designation in the land use map would avoid stacking the deck essentially in favor of a proposal that is currently contested in court and awaiting a decision. If the appeals court overturns the lower court decision, which means if the appeals court says you can re-estate via approvals of the reselling there. Even if this land use map says rural or ag, it would still be zoned for the Parker. So, so changing the land use designation would not change what happens if, basically, the city and Mr. Hooten win the appeal. If, however, the appeals court upholds, my side of it, sorry to bring this up, but, but says this is still invalid, the developer could start again, right? And you would start again from the same place that you started originally, because originally it was agriculture. So it seems to me that instead of sort of stacking the deck in favor of a proposal that's in question right now, it would be more appropriate to just sort of reset it to what it was back when that whole thing started. And then another part of it that is, again, a more objective part, is kind of like I was talking about with the greenhouse parcel and the one where that's along Blackjack that Earl Thompson and Whites have used, is avoiding potential future interpretation that any or all commercial uses are desired there. So just imagining if for some reason the Parker kind of goes away, you know, just, just imagining if, you know, he's having off or, you know, the PUD fails or whatever. But we'll have this land use map that says that 97 acres should be commercial. And it wouldn't say it should be this particular PUD with these particular constraints and so on. It would just say, this is a great place to put commercial uses. Now, again, I know that any proposals would have to get filtered through the city, you know, zoning board, council, and so on and so forth. But it would be inviting essentially kind of a misinterpretation. You know, it could invite, like, say some, you know, say, again, say Mr. Hooten sort of gets tired of things or, you know, of this whole process or whatever, just sells it in the future. I mean, he's my age, right? We're not going to live forever. And he hasn't maybe developed the whole thing, which he's, you know, he's setting why not, right, depending on demand. So if that gets sold, I guess the PUD would be in place. But what I'm trying to say is, it just sort of invites misinterpretation right now. My understanding is that's all commercial because that's sort of what the city council voted for it to be at one point. But that's just this contentious and difficult issue that's tied up in court right now and that's sort of imposing a legacy of one particular proposal onto all potential future uses. So I'll leave that there. I know that, you know, it's kind of weird to have me talking about that and I'm not very comfortable with it, but it's, it's an important point and one that my neighbors also felt that should be brought up. So I really appreciate, I know this is a lot, right? I'm sitting here kind of firing a lot at you and I, I can't tell you how grateful I am for the opportunity, my neighbors as well, to be able to meet with you as we requested and so on. One thing I would also say is that, I know you sort of set out to think about this stuff tonight and maybe vote on it, but... tonight and maybe vote on it, but I would encourage you that if you still have questions, I know you have an opportunity to ask them and get them answered tonight, but, or if you just want to kind of think about some of what we've suggested to you or whatever, waiting is not a bad thing. I've been a person on the other side of the table a number of times, you know, slightly different things, but at public meetings where people have kind of thrown a lot of information at me. And fortunately, in the position that I was in, we didn't have to, like no one expected us to make a decision that night. So I could go home and sleep on it and think about it and then, you know, I'd be like, oh, I didn't ask about this or what about that or whatever. I know that we, you know, things have been delayed a little bit already and again, grateful that they have so that we have this opportunity, but a few more days or another week or something isn't really going to make a difference. There's nothing like really pressingly urgent about this. Yes, we want to get going with it and get it in place, but I would just encourage you that, I'm not saying, hey, wait, but I'm just saying, you know, kind of opening that door and think about it, you know, if you might have questions, you know, consider maybe whether or not to kind of cogitate on this stuff for a little while. So anyway, I think I'm done and I don't remember the format here, but do I stay here and ask any questions or should I sit down?
Nope. We'll actually let you go back to your seat and
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, do we have any other individuals that would like to speak in opposition of the planning commission? Okay, then I'd like to offer time back to Matt on behalf of the city for his commentary back. Keep her asleep here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Try to follow some of the main points of what Wendy had talked about. Generally, you know, when we're, when we're looking at planning the future land use, we, you know, as a staff, we try to consider, you know, our knowledge of existing uses all around town. And we look at any relevant districts such as the Highway 20 design corridor. And that's an overlay district that has special, you know, details about certain areas throughout the highway corridor and the context of what, you know, the city has developed over the years and what we want those corridors to look like. And so it's definitely something that we need to consider as part of this future land use planning. And to look at the existing properties out there, you know, we have a lot of areas, you know, particularly in the Blackjack corridor, along Highway 20, you have a lot of commercial uses and it's kind of this jigsaw pattern of parcels that are in and out of the city, what we want to do with them in the future. And, you know, the city has partnered with the county and decided to pursue this cut off road. And so when we're looking at that, it's important for us to consider, you know, what's going to happen if that road does go through and what development pressures we're going to have out there as a result of that. We need to consider, like she says, the stormwater effects from if we do a higher density commercial or high-density residential type use, what kind of runoff is that going to create versus something that's lower density or lower intensity? And what traffic is that going to create? And so we overlay that with what our design manual is calling for too. I think she got a snapshot of that in the packet. But when we look at the view sheds that they wanted to protect back down, we need to make sure that there's a, there's a point of a view shed from Powderhouse Road that looks to the south towards Tanniger Mountain as you come around Horseshoe Mountain. That was the one pointed out at that note. There's also other notes that are called out along that corridor such as Jupiter and Bogus and Bethelier. And so one of the things in the highway design manual, when we look at an overall development proposal is what kind of development patterns are we going to have through that corridor? And so they use this null approach where you use these existing intersections and you have to create cross streets at those intersections. Part of the regulations requires that we have these cross streets and we're not creating more accesses with more roads or things along the highway. There's this difficult interface with what I dot regulations exist and how does that impact traffic? And so when you overlay some of that stuff on here, it really constrains what we can put out there for land uses. It requires access roads and things like that as well. And when you look at the particular properties such as, you know, a big hotel or something that's in the way of other potential cross streets or access roads, aside from the future land use map, we start to really drill down this picture of what can we actually put out there? And so in concept right now, you know, the Blackjack road could come out where Jupiter is, but that's probably about the only place it can come out if we're going to comply with our existing highway design manual. And what parcels are available yet that haven't been developed yet or could be redeveloped or be likely to be redeveloped? And so that's something I wanted us to consider tonight too, you know, based off of information that you drew. Are these uses appropriate? I think it's important to note too, the differences between land uses and zoning districts. And so when we're looking at our zoning map, we're thinking about, you know, particular districts on each parcel, how they're zoned and what land uses are available in that district and how intense or dense that property can be developed. And also it's important to know what utilities are available to it. We have water, that's adequate water supply along the highway corridor that goes out to our reservoir. We have adequate fire flow. We have issues with pressure out there. They're kind of in the lower part of the range where we want to increase the pressure out there a little bit. The city does have other capital plan to make improvements and look at an east side well at our reservoir site. So the water is probably going to be handled in the future. The one thing on the south side of Highway 20 that is an issue is the availability of sanitary sewer. And so when we're looking at how we can get sewer from those areas down to our sewer plant, we need to go, if we're going to go by gravity, we have to go through the Davis Street area. And so that's going to take some substantial improvements to get a sewer that doesn't exist out there now. Otherwise, we have to do a lift station and try to collect it and then pump it across the highway to another gravity system. And so these constraints all, you know, really limit us by what we can put out there and what processes have to happen to even develop anything. And so one thing I was going to mention about future land use, it's something that similarly done in a zoning map is you can have dual zoning or different portions. And when you look at the mixed residential parcel that Mr. Petersburg has, or if you have concerns or want to reconsider anything, you know, our highway manual calls for redevelopment or more intense things kind of along that corridor where existing development happens, you could potentially have mixed use closer to the highway and then make it less dense as you get away from that towards that rural area that Wendy was talking about too, where you kind of go into a countryside residential or a single-family character. Or if you decide that you want to have a mixed use and leave that wider range where it's single-family up to multifamily, you know, we are going to have to address those issues with availability of utilities and traffic and things like that too. I think, you know, it's definitely worth considering tonight whether or not you, if you want to stick with the map as it is or if you want to make adjustments, I'd ask you to consider the availability of utilities, what stormwater it can create. Speaking of stormwater, we have existing stormwater ordinance that's separate from the zoning manual, but we're required to look at that, especially before building permitting processes. The ordinance is using rational method and probably some aged forms of assessing stormwater that could be improved upon. And perhaps we can look at that subsequent to our comp plan to make sure that we are using best practices in current times. It's probably independent of the future land use map directly, but there are indirect consequences for how we plan with land uses. as she mentioned, we also need to look at, perhaps in our subsequent zoning audit that the plan recommends here, whether or not residential areas need to be a little bit more constrained on stormwater runoff. We do address that usually with subdivision processes where residential districts are required, you know, if you have a subdivision stormwater detention program. Commercial is required for onsite detention across the board in zoning, but that is something we can definitely look at too that might address some of the concerns that the residents in the Blackjack corridor have. I think that generally covers some of my comments on it. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. You two got any questions for Mr. Oldenburg?
I don't think I do here.
I do not. Damon?
No, I don't believe so.
Do you two have any questions for Ms. Wendy?
No.
I believe in the, in the process, the opposition has a chance to
One more chance? Okay. Wendy, do you want to come back up? You're welcome to.
I actually don't think I have any questions.
Okay.
And then I believe the board can, based off the evidence and testimony you heard, can ask any questions again or, you know?
Any questions?
Or not.
Free to sit down. Thank you. Okay. At this time, I'd like to see if we have a motion to close the public hearing on 25 Peter Charlie dash 25.
So moving.
Okay. Could you take roll call, Mary Beth?
Marley?
Yes.
Thanks, Marley.
Yes.
Alan.
Alan.
Okay. I'd like to move on to item 25 PC dash 26. City Administrator Matt Oldenburg to present on the future land use map.
Thank you. The main point of this item tonight, when we, when we met and had those discussions and Wendy has pointed out, some of the areas around town where we represent a non-conforming use. I wanted to just have that quick discussion and have you consider how we want to depict that on this map going forward. So that gives us time to make any adjustments that you would want. And so some of the examples
Before you get going, do you have different items other than what Ms. Clark provided to us? Very nice, by the way.
I have, I have some just general categorizations.
Okay.
So not, they're legally existing non-conforming uses. So at some point in history of Galena, it was legal for somebody to do that land use. Then we later changed the rules. They become a legally existing non-conforming use or nonconformity. And so the way that this future land use map has shown was basically identifying all of those non-conforming uses
Yep.
as they exist now. And that goes on the future land use map of
Yeah.
what they are now.
What you're, I believe, I just want to make sure we make this easy and clear. I think what you're telling us, and I think Ms. Clark did a good job of stating it too, is if we use the greenhouse as an example, Matt, we could put it to residential, but if someone wanted to reopen that greenhouse, they could because it's a greenhouse today.
Yeah. And so I was going to explain that too with the definition, you know, if something sells, like we, we'll do a compliance letter and we'll state what the facts are about that property. And specifically, you know, if a kayak business was storing kayaks somewhere in a residential barn on the periphery of town, we've written compliance letters that says you can store up to 20 kayaks and that's it. It can't be greater intensity than that. It can be equal or less intensive.
Yeah.
And so that's how we kind of administer that. There's actually detailed regulations for non-conforming uses in our zoning code. So that's a control measure that we have to make sure that it doesn't expand or sprawl. There are some limited expansions and things that they could do, but it's handled through that process. But a practice in the planning world is to show on a future land use map, what do we want it to be if that use was abandoned? Instead of just showing what the existing use is? And so I'd like some direction from you and we can adjust the map if we need to, but how do you want to show it? Do you want to show it as existing or if it's different than what we want it to be now? And another, another thing is, I want you to think about please is what is the, what is the site and the structure comprised of? So is the structure really a commercial structure? For example, if it's a bar in the middle of a neighborhood district? Do you want that to become a house later or residential use or do you generally want it to be commercial?
Yeah.
So I think it's important to look at what is the structures on the property? That doesn't mean, you know, if you use the greenhouse example and it's in a residential district, it's really a commercial type building, but maybe we do want that to, if it's abandoned, just go back to residential. So I kind of was looking for direction on that as well. If it's clearly a house and they had an artisan studio or something that, you know, maybe wasn't formally approved through a special use process
I will say, Matt
and it went away, how would we, how would we want to depict that?
If you want us to talk about that now, one by one, we can do that. I was under the assumption we'd do that during the discussion in 27.
Yep.
Because I'm prepared to talk about that with the rest of the planning commission, each one of those items actually.
Okay. There's quite a few non-conforming
You are asking for in general the entire map, not just
Yeah. I think that the staff can go through and we know all of the conditions at each site. And I don't know if you need to go through individually, but
I'm not sure I want to go through anything other than what Ms. Clark provided us, but I would like to at least go through those
Okay.
in 27.
Yep.
And the rest, you know, we can discuss it and then provide you guidance on the rest in general
Perfect.
During item 27.
And I can answer questions during your discussion item too, if you want.
Very good. That'd be great.
Yep. Just generally looking for direction, if you want staff to do the detail work, we can make those adjustments and then present it in the final plan to the council.
With the exceptions of the items Ms. Clark and the community brought up, I'd like the commission to directly review those.
Okay.
I think we owe that.
I have
Any questions?
No.
From Matt? Thank you, Matt. Okay. At this time, we're going to go to 25 Peter Charlie dash 27. Discussion of possible action on the recommendation to the Galena City Council regarding the adoption of the comprehensive plan. So Desiree, Damon, do we want to go through the specific items? Like, I think it's a good idea that you do.
I think we should.
I do too.
Yeah, I think we should.
I, I'm going to go ahead and start. I think we all wrote notes on these. When I take a look at, and it was very well put together, I very much appreciate the bullet points versus the big packet, so thank you, even though I looked at both. Yeah, when I, when I look at the greenhouse and it's been that way since I was a kid too, I can remember, you know, Ms. Olm's over there and everybody else. After hearing what Wendy mentioned, after hearing what Matt said, I would definitely, in my opinion, feel that if I look at the surrounding area, that should go back to the single-family residential. That would be my thought.
Is it single-family, no?
I have a question.
Or is it medium?
Doesn't there have to be a motion for discussion?
Oh, do we have to do a motion for discussion? Matt?
Yeah, did you open discussion possible action here?
Yeah, they did not have a motion.
Oh, no. My apologies. Need a motion to open.
Motion to discussion.
Second.
Okay.
No, we can't have a motion for discussion. It has to be action.
Oh, we have to move to make all these changes or not make all these changes, correct?
Yes.
Basically.
Make a motion.
And then we can go through one by one.
Okay.
All right. I move to make the suggested changes from this handout. Is that close enough?
Okay, do we have a second?
I'm sorry.
You have a second?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Yeah.
All right. Mary Beth, take a roll call.
Now we discuss first, right?
No, we have to do a roll call.
So what is the motion?
Are we
To make the recommended changes.
Are we just blanket approving all this or are we?
No. No.
No, we're discussing it. So we motion a second and then we discuss, right? Is that wrong?
No.
Hey, Matt, since you didn't have our legal here, help us out here, buddy.
I'm sorry. What is your question?
Our question is-
So we want to discuss each of these bullet points, but we need a motion on the table in order to do that.
You need a motion-
So a motion?
To approve or deny.
And then second, and then discussion?
Yeah.
And then a vote, correct?
And you open for discussion.
Because then we amend the motion if we-
Before we vote. Right.
You would have to-
That's how we do the zoning.
Right, Mary Beth? If you want to change things and then vote on that and then you go back and do your-
You would do it with an amendment. Okay. That's how we do it.
That's how we do it with zoning. So I'm just assuming that's-
I'll defer to you guys, obviously.
All right. So if you do, let's rewind and restate.
All right. I move to make the changes that were suggested on this, on our handout, our bullet point handout.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Do I need to do in favor of? I don't think so. All right. Let's discuss.
Discuss first.
All right. You heard my commentary on the greenhouse. Thoughts?
I agree.
Yeah. Residential of some kind. I think this one, although there's MDR.
Good.
I might be wrong, but-
The next one-
Can we categorically somehow generalize that? Because this is more zoning than it is.
Yeah. I would, you have to add, let me see what that is. So right now, over there, I think it's, it is the yellow, which is, I believe it's mixed.
Yeah. See the city zoning map?
It's the greenhouse commercial.
Marked on there.
Is that mixed or single family around? Matt, is that single family or mixed around the greenhouse today?
That is, there's low density residential and medium over in that area.
Yeah.
I believe the greenhouse parcel is actually dual zoned, a little bit medium and a little bit low.
Parcel to parcel.
Of course.
Or just the same parcel.
Dual zoning.
Interesting.
But you could, but everything on that map around that is single family land use.
So single family land use.
Okay. Now you've got to remember this when we go through the end. All right. The next item was the one out there. It's the N right here. That's the item, so. And in my mind, this is the same.
Not a commercial.
It would fit more the agriculture here. I really do agree with that one. As suggested, but thoughts, discussion?
I would agree with that as well.
Yeah.
Okay. And next one was the Merkel Petersburg along US 20. Make both single family and residential. Now, this one, I didn't agree with because we specifically did that and we had numerous discussion on this at our meeting. And that, we made it a point to do that so that we could potentially bring other business up there.
Yeah. And I remember some discussion at the, some of the breakout groups with the community, that was our group anyway, had discussed that as well. So I actually agree with keeping that one as it is.
Okay.
Same.
The fourth bullet, larger Petersburg parcel. The comment was change that to the rural agriculture, the yellow. Yeah. And we actually specifically had that as a potential area for, because again, as the planning commission, we're supposed to be looking for the future. This isn't a we're going to go do it.
Right.
This is providing a map or a thought process for where folks could have stuff. And yes, we did talk about, you know, the water and the traffic and that, but just because we do a future, we want a place for folks to be able to expand on that side, doesn't mean it's going to happen. They still have to go through zoning. Still have to go through all the studies. Thoughts?
Yeah. I actually agree with that as well.
Same. Yeah.
Okay. The large hillside parcels, change to rural.
That's the void.
Yeah. And I was okay with that. Change it to, that made sense to the agriculture.
Actually am as well.
Let's, see this void?
This right here, right?
Down in here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, fits with the rest of that area, especially since we just did this.
Yeah.
So the boat and property that is single family there, do you want to go to rural?
Yes. I thought we were talking about this one here.
That one right there.
That is rural already though, right?
No, it's not a single family residential.
On the future map, it's depicted as single family at this point.
Okay.
Yep. And I, I think it does make sense.
Rural would allow for potential, you know, lower density housing, bigger parcels, et cetera, right? Is that what I was understanding?
Depends on the parcel size and how it's presented.
Right. Yeah. You have to like subdivide.
Sure.
Stuff like that. Yep. I can go either way on this one based on what it is today. I'm good with the agriculture.
I am, actually.
The next one, I want to get this right, one, two, three, four, five, that would be item six. Gateway Park area. Again, this is one we specifically talked about. I know we've got some what we consider commercial out there. We talked about that. We went back and forth on it and in the end, we wanted additional area for it to be commercial. Those are relatively newer areas we discussed. We discussed it at the GMS. We discussed it here. I want one of you two to take the lead on this one.
I struggled with this one, honestly, because it was discussed at length. We've kind of gone back and forth about it, but I think we started some commercial, you know, that is there. I think it's a good location for some additional commercial. I am favorably being that as commercial.
Good. I am too.
Agreed.
Okay. The last one is the large orangey red parcel down here. Note it as the Parker parcels. Damon, I'll let you start with this one.
I mean, I understand the concern because it's been earmarked for a specific project by changing it to commercial to pave the way for something different. And I understand that's a bigger zoning problem at the end of the day, so I guess that's where I struggle.
I'm actually in favor of changing it back to rural agricultural. I think there was a lot of good points made. It's a possible good location for some commercial development, but also has some good potential as rural agricultural. Doesn't mean it can't change in the future if we decide that. Maybe that's what we want if we go instead.
On this one, this is my opinion, Desiree and Damon, I'd rather it be what we did as a larger commission group and let this thing play out in court. I don't want to get in the middle of this one.
That's fair. I mean-
Did you have something to say? Because it's not, it's not public time.
Should probably shouldn't purchase.
That's why I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yes, it is. Thoughts?
Yeah. No. I mean, that's a, that's a good point too. I mean, it's a lot and I understand this is the land use map, not a zoning map.
Yeah. The zoning board.
There, I have a quick question. So there was some discussion we talked about, or it was mentioned earlier, reviewing this plan at more frequent intervals than we have in the past. Is that the plan, is that the city's intent? I'm wondering if we'll have a chance to come back and review this.
It's recommended through the plan that we review it every five years.
Five years.
We can review it more frequently too if we want.
At least more than 20.
When we discuss with the planner, you know, planning professionals about how set in stone is all of this, you know, this is our, this is our guide map to how we want to do things in the future and there are opportunities that may or may not come up, where things might change, where we want to reassess it. There could be a development that comes out of blue that we didn't identify or think about on the future land use map. And so as part of that public process of going through all of the requests and things, if it conflicts with what our future land use map is, then we should bring it back to the planning commission and ask them if they'll consider that too. So that input is given into the-
Future one.
To the zoning or the, you know, we've got to have those independent meetings. So that way the council and the zoning board have input from the planning commission on are we okay with changing our future land use map? And so we can, we can do that from time to time. So the same, you know, if there's things of litigation right now, you know, if you want to wait and things work where it doesn't turn out that that's going to be happening soon, you can come back and change it to the same or you can identify what you want it to be if it wasn't that use now. And if it goes through, it still has the zone like she had said. So it really depends on how you want to recommend it to the council.
I don't want to do something in opposition that the city or whatever has already done. I want to let it play out. I don't, I don't want to be on either side. I just let it play out. And as the planning commission, I'd be happy to come back at that time, depending on what happens.
Agreed.
That's my-
So you're keeping that?
Well, so just to make sure I'm clear with my teammates here, the Merkel Petersburg, the larger Petersburg, the Gateway Park and the Parker Parcels, we were not okay with changing. All the others, East Side, the small, the large hillside, we were in alignment on changing. Yes, that's what I had. So would you like to make an amendment?
I would like to amend my motion. I would like to move to, yes, change the East Side Greenhouse to single family residential. Yes, change the small festival parcel to rural agricultural, agriculture, excuse me. I'll leave the Merkel Petersburg parcel as is. Leave the Petersburg parcel as is. Yes, change the large hillside parcel to rural agriculture. Leave the Gateway Park area as is and leave the Parker Parcels as is.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mary Beth, would you take roll, please?
I'm Marlon.
Yes.
May I?
Yes.
May I?
Yes. Okay. At this time, that concludes the items on the agenda. So I'd like to see if we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you and thank you, Mary Beth. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Wendy, and to all those that attended this evening. Very much appreciated. Anything else you need from us at this time, Matt?